Share my screen if I have that capability.
Good deal.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's see, share screen. And. Okay, can you all see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I'm sure there's a way to get rid of the sidebar. Let's not worry about it. So I just, I went through and got some statistics and stuff. And this is just kind of as a baseline information. And as I think we all are aware, we're seeing another surge coming. This is the epidemic curve from the very beginning, all the way back in March of 2020. And it went up and then it went down and then it went up and then it went down. And look, it's going up again. So this is also a very similar graph of showing hospitalizations, same deal. The, the line at the top is the total COVID cases and those hospitalizations are going up. The orange, brighter orange line in the middle is the COVID-19 patients in intensive care units. And that's going up. And then the line on the bottom doesn't, it doesn't look like it's really changing a whole lot. It's patients on respirators, on ventilators. So that's another way of looking at kind of how things are. Hospital capacity currently is not very good in terms of occupied and available staffed adult ICU beds in region one, which is at the top, and that's the region we're in. ICU beds, we have 16% of the available beds of the beds that there are, are available. And for total hospital beds, only 5% are available. I don't, I didn't go get a graph on how that's been previously, but it certainly hasn't been this bad for quite a while. So that's not a good thing. This is an interesting slide that shows the variants. They don't, they aren't, we aren't doing a whole lot of testing in Oregon. But of the testing we're doing, the Delta variant is the one that we're looking at. And it's that yellow color. So you can see that since about the end of May, beginning of June, that has become the predominant variant. And the problem with that is, of course, that it is considerably more contagious. Here's our vaccination trends. And don't worry about the colors. The colors just indicate what kind of a vaccine. But the total vaccination trends, we were going great guns in April, May. And then it really fell off in June, July, August. Well, August, we're hardly in. But you can see that that doesn't look particularly good. That's statewide. And again, statewide in terms of age groups. And this is only when, whenever you see percentages on vaccines, almost always, if they don't specify, it means they've gotten at least one dose. And it's, it's important to know that because one dose even of the mRNA vaccines, Moderna and Pfizer, is not especially good in terms of protection. But two doses are. So this is only one dose. And you can see that the percentage of people who've had at least one dose goes down as the age goes down. So only 40% of people 10 to 19, well, 12 to 19, have been vaccinated. Whereas 83% of those older than 80 or older have. And then in Tillamook County, our percent vaccinated in the central counties, zip codes of 141 and 143, it's almost 48% have had at least one dose. And in our zip code, and as we've talked about before, this does not include our Manzanita zip code 97130, because it's too small, but 97131 includes a lot of the Hailland Bay area. And we actually are 53.7%, which is still not particularly good and kind of shocking. And, and just to remind everybody, vaccines are still available at the health department. They're doing vaccine clinics at the building next door to the health department on Tuesdays from 8:30 to 11:30 with, for the Pfizer vaccine. And that's for 12 and older. And then on Thursdays, same time, and that's Moderna. And that's only for 18 and older. And if you want J and J, you can get it on either of those days, Tuesday or Thursday. And that's going on at least through August. This is an interesting, I think, graph that shows that vaccines do make a difference. This is in counties, in areas, in counties where less than 60% are vaccinated, that's the orange line. So you can see that the case numbers are higher. And then the blue line is more than 60% of people are vaccinated. So that's, I think, interesting. So that's, any questions about those sort of graphs and, and numbers and stuff?
Do you want to prognosticate and estimate where you think this is going to go in the next 30 days or so? Yeah, it certainly looks that way.
It's going to go up. I, I didn't make slides for it, but OHSU does a prediction. And it's up, it's going to go up. We can't vaccinate our way out of it right this, even if everybody who hadn't been vaccinated got their first shot today, that takes, then you have to wait three or four weeks, depending on which vaccine. And then get your second one and wait another two weeks. So there's not going to be any impact on cases, even if everybody somehow magically could get vaccinated tomorrow. It still wouldn't matter for the next six weeks. So I think we're in for some not very great few weeks or more.
Yeah, I was just looking on my phone to see if they reported today's numbers yet, but the state hasn't. Oh, it was over 1,500 yesterday, which is a pretty shocking number. And I'm interested as to what's going to happen today. Well, anybody got any questions for Margaret?
So, so Margaret, yeah, given that we're moving into the critical days we're moving into, and given that we're not really getting a lot of leadership at a statewide level in terms of what to do, what would be your recommendations about mask wearing? Is it important to wear it all the time inside buildings? What, what would be your general advice and counsel?
Sure. So the mitigation options that are available basically are, there's two, vaccination and masking when indoors. That's, that's the current recommendation. I think that the CDC guidance is pretty confusing because they, they sort of slice and dice masking indoors recommendation in terms of whether you're in a high-risk area or not a high-risk area. But the thing is, everybody's in a high-risk area. People are moving about all the time. If you look at the data that shows how mobile people are, that's been going up. I mean, people are, all of us are really, really tired of just staying home and not doing anything. So I think we should be doing the strongest possible that we can do, recommendation that people wear masks when they're indoors in public places. And then everything we can do to require vaccines. I don't think at this point that we need to require or ask people to mask on the street. I do think we could say something about outdoors when you're all crowded together. I mean, I wouldn't go to a, you know, political rally or, you know, something like that. Or a concert, an outdoor concert right now, I don't think, without a mask. But indoors, I went to Fred Meyer in Tillamook yesterday and I, I rolled out my KN94 mask and wore it. And the number of people that were wearing masks in that Fred Meyer was not a high number. So, yeah. And then, and then the other question is, you know, is it safe to get together with your family members or friends if you know everybody's been vaccinated? And, and the answer to that, I could have said, I don't know. I said, it depends instead on the slide. But because even if everybody's vaccinated, because we now know that people that have been vaccinated, if they're exposed to the Delta, they can have it in their system and they can spread it. And if you happen to be one who didn't mount a terribly robust vaccine response, you could get sick, probably won't get very sick. That's the good news. We have had breakthrough cases in the state, not very many. It's, it's a low percentage, but it's certainly not zero. So, you know, I had family here a couple of weeks ago and that, I think, was the only week that we still thought it was going to be okay. And they had little kids too, so that makes it even scarier. So, so mask, I think mask indoors, I really think that's important.
Well, it, you know, this is really a crazy time because as you all know, last month when we were at a city council meeting, we were talking about the mandates on COVID and our state of emergency here in Manzanita, we dropped, we lifted that on June 30th because the state list lifted all their stuff. And we thought we were going to start the conversation about going back to in-person meetings. And the world's turned upside down in a matter of a few weeks. And this Delta variant is just taking over the country and the state of Oregon. And what we're seeing is there's no clear plan or any lack of political will at the state level, or probably even the county level, to, to tell us what to do. Nobody wants to go back to closing down in-person dining or, and no one has the political will to get into that. So I think what it's, what you're telling us, Margaret, is it's individual responsibility. You need to look out for yourself at this point and use your head.
Yeah, but, but is there something, yes. And is there something that the city could do to publicize this? I mean, you're welcome to post the slides or this conversation or whatever on the, on the city website. I just, I think all of us in this room understand what's happening. But there's obviously quite a large percentage of people in our 97131 zip code who haven't even gotten one dose yet. Like over 40%. And that's not a good thing. That is a lot of fodder for the virus to go rampaging through and mutating its little heart out.
Yeah. And unfortunately, this is my humble opinion, but I think everybody knows about the vaccine. They know where to get it. And everybody's, the lines are gone. And there's people that have got the vaccine and there's people that just don't want to get the vaccine. And I don't know how you get them to do it at this point. And I tell you what, it's kind of like going back to, to the mask zone that we did before with a lot of signage. And of course, we get a lot of visitors here and we pretty well got people masked up. It took some time. But if we don't have the backing of the county or the state of Oregon, or even the federal government telling us there's a mandatory mask mandate, other than just talking to people, I don't, there's nothing much we can do. It's, it's a strange, it's a strange situation.
It is.
I guess, I guess my major concern, and I, I think there are a couple of things the city could do. My major, my major concern is just universal. And that is, this variant is bad. But the more people that are not vaccinated, the more that's transmitted, the more likely you're going to get another variant, which may not be able to be protected by the current vaccine. So I mean, I just think we need to be careful. And the two things I would recommend to the city is we have those electronic signs that we had out before. And, and maybe a sign that says, you know, please be courteous inside and wear your mask or something like that. And the second would be to ask Dan to send something around to the merchants that, that say, and I know, I know a couple of them do this anyway, but encourage masking within, within, within buildings, within particularly within commercial buildings. We would, there would be an effort to recommend that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it. I think those are both good ideas. And they're about the only things we can do at this point, probably.
Well, it's, you know, Fred Meyer, when they had a sign out front, they wanted everybody to be masked for months. And we, you go into Fred Meyer's and they was about, it was pretty much 90 or 100% masked. And then a month ago, when we just all let the air out of the balloon and said, well, it's over, they stopped wearing masks. Yeah, I was down there a few days ago too. And there's a few people in masks. I was in masks, but I don't know how you're going to get everybody back into masks again in a place like Fred Meyer.
But I, but I, I think the more we can encourage people to do that. And I, and I've been talking to people on the street about it. And I think everybody understands. I mean, it's just, you do what you can. I don't know that we require it, but encourage it, I think would be an appropriate function for the city.
Yeah, I think that's about all we can do at this point and look out for ourselves too. That's the important thing. The, so going back to the virtual meetings versus in-person meetings, which kind of this kind of throw puts a nail in the whole idea. The, you know, virtual meetings have become so successful that they've kind of become the standard for public meetings. And we have a lot of people that are working from home now. And it's, and it's, we found, at first I didn't like them because I wasn't very comfortable with them. But we've all kind of got comfortable with them over, it's been over a year and a half. This is what we do now. And I think what we found is that the, is provided more access to people and, and more information available doing it this virtually than we ever did when we were doing it in person. And I don't know if you realize this, but because they have become so popular and so many people are used to virtual meetings, the state has passed a law that effective January 1st, you go back to public meetings, you have to continue to offer the virtual option. And we're in no position to do that right now. We don't even have a city hall. So I, I have no idea where this is going, this, you know. But we're not going to be doing face-to-face meetings anytime soon. I, I, I'm afraid maybe we might be doing this till we build a new city hall where we can build in the, the electronics and so forth to be able to do a virtual meeting in conjunction with a face-to-face meeting. So I don't know, it's just, the last month had just thrown, thrown a monkey wrench into the whole idea, in my opinion.
Yeah. And, and you know, EDC was planning to have our, in June, we had the same conversation. We meet late in the month. So at the end of June, we thought we'd have the July meeting in person. And then, so we just went back to Zoom.
Yeah.
I think that's appropriate. I think it's going to be months. I really think it's going to be months because after, as we get through this current summer situation, then we get into the fall and winter, which ordinarily is a worse time for all respiratory viruses. So I think we've probably, I mean, I can't even stand to think about it. But I think we're probably in for another six or eight or 10 months.
Yeah. And of course, a lot of us on this call are, are a little over 40 and have some underlying health conditions and not too anxious to get together with a bunch of people in a small room.
Exactly. Well, and then the other question, which I also would be answering, I don't know, is what about boosters? And there's just no, there's no consensus on the need for boosters at this point. The WHO says, please don't start giving boosters until we've got everybody else in the world with at least, you know, one fully vaccinated, in, in fully vaccinated condition. But I bet that doesn't last because there's plenty of people that, like you said, are well over 40 and have various pre-existing conditions. So.
I'd be surprised, I'd be surprised if we're not getting boosters in the fall.
Kind of would too.
And you know, the other thing, if you, as we all do, kind of look around at the numbers, this is a worldwide problem. This is not here. And there's so many countries around the world that haven't even got off the dime on vaccinating yet. So until, until we get a worldwide effort going to knock this thing out, as you say, this, we may be messing with this for another year.
Or more, or more. Julianne has a question, Mike.
What was that?
Julianne has a question.
Oh, oh, yeah, sure. Go ahead, Julianne. I see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I, you know, I was hoping that, that the leadership of the city might get, might think about a different way of being creative about talking to both our citizens and the, this abundance of visitors that we have all the time. And so, you know, I think PR campaigns really are effective. And I think a lot of people are not aware of the, the difference in the variant of the, the Delta variant. And so in my notion of trying to think about how, if I were on council, I might suggest people to, to think about getting creative, it seems to me there ought to be somebody who's a retired PR person in our community who could take some of the information that Margaret has shared with us and, 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 and create a PR message instead of this. Margaret, I appreciated every single bit of information that you gave us, but it might be more details. We, I think we need some headlines that just, that say, you know, danger the, I mean, I'm not the, the PR person. Danger the variant and wear your masks and get vaccinated. And just, if it just said those three things over and over and over again, it's the repetition that gets to people. It's not that the information's out there and they know it. It's that they, it doesn't, it doesn't inoculate them. Oh, sorry to use that pun, but anyhow. And, you know, that, that's what's effective. That's what's effective in national camp, political campaigns. That's what's effective in making us buy Tide detergent. So that's what I'd, I'd hope, I'd hope that you, I just want to encourage you all to think a little bit differently about the power that you actually have as leaders for us. Go for it. Get out there. Wave the flag.
Well, Julianne, we've talked a little bit about the signage and, and we, we actually had a contest at the beginning of this.
That was wonderful.
Which was wonderful, right. And maybe that's, it's a different message than it was initially.
Exactly.
Going back and, and encouraging the community to give us some ideas. And then, you know, make the posters that go, that we hand out and.
And just say that's a, this is different. This is not the same old, same old COVID that we started out with. This is different. It's a monster in our midst. I don't care what you call it, but it's, it's very different. And if we don't, if we don't bust this COVID monster in our midst in Manzanita, we're going to have another variant. And it could, like Margaret even said, it could be a lot worse. So I just encourage you, you know, workshop or someplace else, start mulling this over and figuring out how you can be, you know, you can be the leaders of the parade with the flags that Dave Dillon usually has the military carry in our Fourth of July parade. But it, it's really up to you now. And I thank you for it. Grab those flags, carry them. Linda will be the cheerleader.
I, I think if, if, if I, with Mike and with Leila, maybe we can talk to Dan Hague.
Yeah, perfect guy.
Just brainstorming about ideas. Cause I, you know, I agree with you. It's, it's a, it's a, it's kind of a different tact. And if you do something slightly different and use the resources we have, I think that's, I think that's a great idea.
And if not, if not you, who? So thank you for listening to me.
I just want to, I just want to second or third what you said, Julianne, about this is not your father's COVID. This is not last year's COVID. It really is different. And the, the health department, both county and really Oregon and CDC and everybody have all sorts of information. But it doesn't seem to have been pointed at that. And so that's why I think people are really pissed off because they say, well, you just told us we can take off our masks and we don't ever have to put them on again. And, and everybody's annoyed. So I think that piece, I really appreciate that insight. Thank you.
I think it needs like a three-word punch. You know, just whatever it is, it's just got to be short and sweet and repeated.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Hans, go ahead.
In the spirit of doing this, we, we do have tools that we've used for quite a while to do this quickly. And they're very effective at a three-word punch. And that's those highway signs. And, you know, those things were, were wearing me out. They're very effective. Every time I came back to town, there was this, you know, fact after fact after fact, do this because you need to. And here's what's happening here in this town right now. And I mean, they were very effective enough that, that it really was kind of a relief when they were gone. But there's certainly, I think, there, there's a need to have them back. And it wouldn't take a lot of, maybe some effort should be put into other sign creation, all of that. But getting a brief, urgent message out soon is really, could, could take a day to have that up and running and ready.
Yeah, I think Dan could get those electronic signs out almost immediately. And Dan Weisel and then Dan Hague, if we can work with Dan to get, maybe not as many of those posters out there. But, but have that message easily seen, I think it would help. And I, and I know the community wants that to happen.
But somebody needs to come up with the punchy message.
Yeah.
Leila, do you have a punchy message you can come up with or do you need help?
Yeah, where, where a mask.
I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I was laughing when you were talking. Go ahead.
I said, wear a mask. That's the.
Well, what, where masks indoors is certainly an important message that's coming back out in mainstream press. And I think it's starting to come back to merchants' minds. More and more merchants are talking about requiring masks in their shops because they, they have more ultimate power right now than the various governments do. So there's nothing, there's, there's nothing saying that the city can't say, wear masks indoors. That's just three words. And it's not a law per se. It's not an emergency declaration. It's just a sign flashing in your face. Wear masks indoors.
Well, you, you know, the other thing is rewarding, rewarding is the right word. But, but encouraging things like a candy store, Manzanita sweets, that you are required to wear masks. You clean your hands when you go in and only a certain number of people can be in there. And it's a small store, but they, they are just, they really encourage that. And, and, and people wait in line to get in there because you know it's safe and it's a good product and that kind of stuff. So maybe, maybe in a Facebook page highlighting what, what some of the merchants are doing in terms of asking people, I think Chang's asks also for people to wear masks inside. Just again, any way possible to encourage and support people to do that.
And, and Chang has modified his sign over time. And now he's basically asking please for people to wear masks in the store. Earlier on, it said it was mandated by the city of Manzanita. Well, it isn't anymore because it's not mandated by anybody. I also noticed down at, at Morzano's coffee shop, that all the employees are back wearing masks. But they're not asking everybody that goes in there to wear masks yet. But I would say probably half the people do because they see the employees wearing them. And people, people I think are getting the individual word. But I agree, putting electronic signs back up on our two main drags when they come in and just say, you know, wear your mask, certainly within inside when our merchants request it or something. I don't, I don't know, but it's something like that. But I guess it's time to bring them back. We took them down a month ago because it was over and it flipped on a dime on us. And now it's worse, almost worse now than it ever was.
We can work on the language, but it definitely needs to come back. And we've got a pretty creative team with Josh and Dan and Ben Hague. I, I bet we can come up with something.
Okay. Well, I think we should probably go to work on that. I haven't heard anything from the other counselors. Steve, you on there today? You got any words of wisdom, thoughts on this?
Steve's having some trouble with his internet connection.
How about, how about Jerry? Is Jerry here with us today?
I am. I don't have anything to add on the, the mask issue. And I think frankly, among our residents, it'll be fairly easy to reinstitute mask wearing. I think the issue is always going to be with our, our visitors. On the vaccination issue, there has been some significant progress down south with getting unvaccinated people to, to step up and get a shot because of a much more pointed and targeted messaging campaign. The messaging is not, uh, just the virtues of getting vaccinated. It's that unvaccinated people are at extraordinarily more risk and the deaths and hospitalizations are disproportionately impacting unvaccinated people. And so that targeted messaging, uh, does seem to be working in places like Louisiana. Um, so the problem for us is that we don't really have much of a vaccination problem immediately in Manzanita. It seems to me from what I've read that, uh, our community has done a pretty good job of getting their shots. The problems are closer to Tillamook City itself. And, and obviously because we have visitors from all over the country, let alone, uh, the world, uh, coming to town. Uh, it's, it's, it's hard for us to use what levers we have to influence those populations. But I, I would just make sure that whatever messaging we settle on is not just, um, a reiteration of what people have already been saturated with because now we are in a different environment and they, they need to hear a much more poignant and targeted message. Um, and, and so I certainly agree with Julianne that, you know, shortened punchy is good, but uh, I think really pointing the fingers squarely at the, at what the problem is. The problem right now is that there is vaccine, vaccine hesitancy that is standing in a way of us nationally reaching herd immunity. And we can all wear masks, uh, for the rest of our days, but if, if the, if there is a stubborn reluctance to, to get the vaccination, uh, it's just going to be a long, hard battle. So whatever we do, I think we should be, you know, really sharp and focused in our, in our messaging. And if we were, I mean, I was tempted to ask Margaret, I think Margaret said that she wouldn't. Well, I'm not sure. I shouldn't put words in your mouth, but you were talking about going to an outdoor concert. And I wasn't sure if you were talking about, would you go to an outdoor concert where, uh, people weren't wearing masks or, or would you go to an outdoor concert where you were not assured of people being vaccinated? I guess any, what little levers we have as a small municipal government, uh, we need to utilize. So if we are contemplating any large gatherings in our small town, we really need to think long and hard about, should they be open to the general public or should they be open to people who are safe to be among others?
Right, right. And I think, you know, I, last week I went to the farmer's market, which is not super, super crowded. And I didn't wear a mask. I think this week I might. I would go, if I went to an outdoor concert, I would certainly wear a mask. Mostly I don't wear a mask outside, but crowded areas are crowded areas. Um, and with as much virus as appears to be in the nasopharynx of even vaccinated people, you know, I feel a whole lot less protected than I did a month ago.
Well, you know, Tillamook County, after much discussion, decided to go ahead with their county fair when it looked like things were getting better and it's next week. And I know they're going to go ahead with it. And I don't know how, what a great idea that is. And I know that our library was planning on doing their library sale, which they normally do on Memorial Day. Want to do it on Labor Day, which now is only a few weeks away. And I just wonder how viable an idea that is under the current circumstances, but.
Yeah, I do too. I, I do. I mean, you can only be.
I'm sure they're thinking about it, but that's a decision they're going to have to make, I guess.
Yeah, nothing is, nothing is easy. And we really all thought that we were coming out of the woods and, and we just aren't. And that's just life and viral evolution, unfortunately.
Yeah.
I guess the question is, so does Leila have the information she needs to move forward with, with what we discussed? And do you need any additional help?
I mean, at this time, it's pretty easy to get those signs back up. I actually sent Dan a note while you were still liberating this and have those up by tomorrow. Um, and I can, I know Dan Hague has been working with the businesses and trying to get the word out for folks that are, um, wanting to require or recommend masks. So I can certainly follow up with him and let him know we had this conversation. Um, but other than that, is there anything additional that I'm missing that?
No. One thing that's nice about those signs, you could change that message all the time. And we have done that. So
Right.
Start out with something, we'll see how it works and if you have to change it, you know?
Feel free to send me your ideas. I will say that, um, staff at City Hall have voluntarily been wearing masks indoors. And I just want to say how much I appreciate that. And we would certainly ask that folks that come up to City Hall, if you would also please wear a mask if you are here for service.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, Leila. And we may, we may do some creative, uh, message creation. Uh, we, we did that before and we'll go back over what we did and see if there's anything that we can bring back and maybe put up the posters that we have along the road, but that'll take some time.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
Well, with that, I, we'll, we will be having a discussion, discussion tonight at the city council meeting about going back to public meetings. I think, uh, we all know where that conversation is going to go. But anyway, we'll, we'll talk about this more tonight. Uh, you want to move on, Linda, and go to the, uh, the mask care and the, and the EDC stuff you wanted to talk about today?
Yeah. So, um, we have, we have a really incredible tool, uh, that's been provided to us about, about five years ago. A, a radio station is a classical radio station called KQMI, which is 88 FM, 88.9, came to the city of Manzanita and, and they wanted a, a transformer. They wanted an option to be able to reach the coastal community. And, uh, so they asked us if they could put up a repeater uh, here in, in Manzanita that would allow their signal to reach from Bay City. I don't, I don't think it goes to Cannon Beach, but to, to reach this area. And the city said yes. And at, at the same time, we asked them if we allowed them to do that, could we communicate messages, uh, that would go to the local community in the event of an emergency? Uh, which is an incredible tool and an incredible option. And they said, yes, that we could do that. So we actually have access to a radio station, 88.9, that we can actually communicate timely messages to our community based on what's going on in our community. And this will be very important in any kind of, in any kind of an emergency, whether it's a fire or whether it's a tsunami or whether it's a road blockage. Any kind of thing that, that the community as a whole needs to, to, to know about, we can communicate. The difficulty is that very few people know about it. So we, we do a message, a trial message on the first and third Wednesdays of every month at 11 o'clock or close to 11 o'clock. We work around their programming. We have a team led by Dave Dillon and Bruce Maxwell and Mark Kessner and Lori Dillon, who actually communicate messages that have the regular message, uh, each month. Uh, and what we're hoping to do is to get people to tune into that and to understand that, that this is the message that they're going to be able to receive in an emergency. So we did a video of it today and I believe Josh has that video, uh, ready to go.
This is a test of emergency capabilities of KQMI FM.
She should be able to unmute.
No, this is Josh doing it.
Yes, that's. I knew I was talking to him.
Oh, okay.
This is homemade test. In the event of an actual emergency, you would be asked to stay tuned to this station for important messages from local safety agency. You would also be asked to advise your friends and neighbors to tune in.
If that's difficult, I think we're, we're, um, we can come back after the presentation if that makes sense.
Linda, he said he's having trouble getting the video to broadcast, but he'll have it ready for tonight.
Oh, that's perfect. We'll just do it tonight. All right. So the next part of our discussion is, um, another project that the city of Manzanita and the Emergency Volunteer Corps of Nahalum Bay have been partnering on. We've been, uh, actually under the leadership initially of Peter Nunn and now of Lee Hilton Brand. We've been working with, EDC has been working with the city of Manzanita to begin to talk about what kind of mask care supplies, what kind of supplies and what kind of process do we need to provide to the citizens and to the, to the people that are in Manzanita in an event that were isolated and, uh, and there are, there are after tsunami and earthquake. So Lee has done a lot of work on this and I'm going to pass the baton to Lee to talk about what he's done and where we are in, uh, some of his recommendations.
Thanks, Linda. Hi, everyone. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here and share some what I hope to be valuable information for all of you to utilize in the, uh, in the coming months and years. See if I can share my screen here. Can everybody see that?
Absolutely.
Okay. So just some, just some facts to kind of get this thing rolling here that the city of Manzanita is responsible for the health and safety of the community. Uh, emergencies obviously require preparation. Earthquakes and fires can occur any, every day, any day. But the, one of the things that I want to emphasize that a lot of our planning and preparation for organizing and prioritizing a supply list is based on Cascadia. The big one that we don't want to happen, that's a 9.2. If you're prepared and ready, supply wise and infrastructure wise for Cascadia, you're ready for pretty much anything. A fire may have some outside influence different from uh, other types of emergency planning, but generally speaking, if we're prepared for Cascadia, we're ready for anything. Natural disasters, this is for Manzanita. Natural disasters would displace hundreds of people. And those people need shelter, food, water, hygiene, et cetera. So in their great planning and consideration for an event like this, the city of Manzanita began putting monies aside and to fund supplies and equipment. So they put $10,000 a year aside and right now the coffer's up to $50,000. Uh, and as Linda mentioned, a team of EBC and B, I should state what that is, right? We don't like acronyms. The Emergency Volunteer Corps of Nahalum Bay had five members that were actively involved in this process that started back in March. And, uh, Linda was also involved as the council president. And our fabulous public works director, Dan Weisell, was also involved. So it was a community effort. And I think that, you know, this speaks for itself. It's despair and disaster all at the same time rolled into one. God forbid it should ever happen here, but these are the kind of things that we need to be ready for and prepared to deal with. So as we look at this, we're in a really remote location. We've talked about this before and we get most of our information on just how remote we are from Dogami, the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, which is a state-run organization, part of the Oregon Emergency Management System. And what they have done is determined that we're, if, if the big one happens or even a event of a lesser magnitude, we would likely be, we would, we would be loners for weeks, if not months. Possibility of months exists. So as your government, your city government, the city of Manzanita is responsible first. And then the county of Tillamook. And then the state of Oregon and the federal government. Well, if any of you've read, done any reading lately in any of the national publications, you know that FEMA has been woefully inadequate in terms of responding to events. Just due to the sheer vastness of the event and the numbers of people that are affected. So really we're back to the city, the county and the state. And just imagine that if we had a mega event here, it's not going to just impact us. It's going to impact the valley as well. And where do you suppose most of that aid is going to go first? The aid for the state is certainly going to be noodled out to the folks that need it the most. And I think, you know, it goes back to assert mantra, Community Emergency Response Team mantra. Do the most good for the most amount of people. And that's where the state resources are likely to be targeted in the beginning. City of Manzanita is in the process of doing this preparation and we're very thankful that the foresight to put some funding aside for these types of activities is paramount to people being comforted and safe after an event. County of Tillamook has been less than less than forthcoming in terms of providing a lot of materials and supplies and ideas. That's not to say they're not involved. They are. But I'm back to, the, the thing I want to emphasize is that we're back to the city taking responsibility for people from day one, maybe through day 60 or 70, possibly longer. So this is a huge task, a huge undertaking. It's something that's going to affect the, uh, government entity for some time to come after an event. So today's purpose is to share recommendations for city emergency supply spending as developed by that group that I mentioned. There were seven of us. And Steve Nuttall actually sent me some notes today and he was concerned that we were going, we, the Emergency Volunteer Corps of Nahalum Bay might be responsible for purchasing these supplies and equipment. And that's not true. We remain uh, a advisory and we're ample and able to support anything that the city wants to do. But you come to us, we don't come to you and tell you what you should do. This is a, a series of recommendations that uh, we're offering today as a means to get the ball rolling and get things started. And just due to the number of, uh, pieces of information I'm going to share today, if anyone from the council, uh, or city manager, if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt and let me know that there's something that's on your mind. I don't want to get through this and then have you say, gosh, I would, wish I would have asked that sooner. So the goals today are to determine, actually the goals for the last few months have been to determine the supply needs and analyze and create some systems that prioritize the equipment that might be needed. We want, and this is very, very important to all of us in the Emergency Volunteer Corps, we want to continue the dialogue with you as a community, as a city, and certainly with the city manager as well as the council. We want to continue this dialogue so that this thing doesn't fade away and nobody for, I don't want anybody to forget the importance and the critical nature. Uh, I also want to discuss some storage limitations today for product materials and supplies. I think this just speaks for itself. Uh, we're not going to be in United Nations tents, but a community that is no longer in their homes and maybe relying on less than, uh, normal sheltering for some time exists. That's a possibility. So I'm going to kind of step aside here for a minute. I think this is important as part of the uh, continuing of this presentation. It's important to have you understand, uh, designations that we use and, uh, naming different elements of areas of refuge. And they are the neighborhood gathering site. That's kind of a moniker that EBC established. But the other two assembly areas, AA and temporary encampments, TEs, those are consistent terms that are used with domestic disaster planning with many organizations throughout the country. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. The neighborhood gathering sites is a place where neighbors share information, food, water, and identify issues so that they're able to communicate amongst themselves and also outside of their immediate boundaries to the emergency operations center. Uh, you may remember Chris. You may remember Chris, Chief Bestwick was with us last month and he talked about Emergency Operations Centers. It appears like Manzanita is going to have to have their own, so that's going to likely be an important element as the city hall gets prepared. And certainly in the planning process, it's, it's critical to having a fully effective location. Assembly areas, neighborhood gathering sites are for the neighbors. They're for the neighborhood, the clusters. Right now there are five clusters within the city limits of Manzanita. We call them clusters. They're essentially neighborhood areas and they have their own system set up to, they're modeled after Emergency Volunteer Corps ideas, but they're their own system and their own stuff that they cache and are able to help their neighbors and the immediate folks in the area. Assembly areas, on the other hand, are safe locations for folks needing to leave rapidly from the evacuation zone. For years and years and years, we talked about the inundation zone and we've been corrected, you know, this nomenclature changes from year to year, it seems. I've only been with the organization for about five years and I think there's been several iterations of what those zones are, but just for, for the vernacular, the tsunami evacuation zone is now the moniker for what was the inundation zone. Same thing, just a different name. Temporary encampments, those are the real crux of what we're going to be talking about today or what, what I'm going to be sharing with you in terms of the directing supplies and equipment to those locations after an event. And they're designed for longer-term sheltering and that's where anybody and everybody that shows up hopefully will have access to food, water, some medical care and important information and communication. When temporary encampments were first discussed for this Nahalum Bay region, there were two of them that were cited and that was through a study in 2017 done by the Catholic Relief Services and funded by the Emergency Volunteer Corps. And it was an amazing document. It was 75 pages long and there were a lot of, a lot of input that went into creating the document. But essentially they established two temporary encampments within the Manzanita. Actually, one in the Manzanita city limits, but another one that would take care of a lot of people from the Manzanita city limits. One being located at Underhill, and this was before Underhill was owned by the city of Manzanita. And then the other one was located at the former Cardam, now the Tillamook Transfer Station. And I'm going to talk about that in a little bit, about some things that need to be done to allow that location to accommodate a temporary encampment. I'm going to back up here a minute. One of the things I think is important to share with you here is that the assembly areas are not designed to furnish any supplies or equipment. It's merely a place of refuge. So as we talk about supply planning today, understand that the city is not expected to to cache or to be able to respond to assembly areas with goods and services, whether they're going to go to the temporary encampments. I'm going to confuse you even more and tell you that until temporary encampments can be readily established, they will be assembly areas. So the nomenclature changes from an assembly area to temporary encampment, but please understand that there are other areas in the area, in the community that are assembly areas, but not necessarily temporary encampments. The encampments are a total of two. And those temporary encampments will probably take anywhere from 24 to 72 hours to have any supplies there. Hence, the Emergency Volunteer Corps' continued effort to educate the public on having their own supplies and the term you've heard many times, the go-bag. The thing you take with you to take care of you and your family for three days. So moving on, who's going to be at these areas? The Neighborhood Gathering Sites are going to be neighborhood residents. And those neighborhood residents may need to assist evacuees from nearby assembly areas. There's a moral and ethical obligation. I don't think there's any civic duty at that point. It's no governmental duty for sure. Assembly areas involve anyone that lives in the local tsunami evacuation zone, of which there are several. Temporary encampment, visitors and residents from inundated neighborhoods and support for residents sheltering at home. Sorry about that. I just, I just had a text that I had to read. Bear with me. So what we did, our, our group of seven, I may refer to it as a team or I may refer to it as a group and you'll understand why in a moment. But our supply methodologies, you know, I guess there was a myriad of ways we could have approached this. We could have suggested that that, that there were a number of ways. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. There were a number of ways. And what we broke it down to was two main conditions that we might work from. And the first one being, take everything that somebody's, somebody might need, an individual might need to survive and be comforted and comfortable and nourished after an event. And that was number A. And by all the things that that person needs, i.e. a tent, make sure they've got plenty of water, they're hydrated, they've got food, they've got a place to go to the bathroom, et cetera. And the second methodology is to take all the components, prioritize them, and then recommend purchasing duplicates of the various product to fulfill the needs for several people. So what we worked off of was B. And we essentially tried to come up with with the funding that we had available. I mentioned earlier the $50,000. For budgetary purposes for this exercise, we used $30,000 so that there was still some funding left in the coffers for some other projects such as the Emergency Operations Center at the city hall that might, excuse me, not at the city hall, that, at the water treatment plant that'll be used in the interim before city hall is constructed. And so there'll be some communication equipment that'll need to be set up there or require some funding. That funding will likely come out of these supply dollars. Again, we're not, I'm, I'm only going on what I've been told about how the city government might approach this. We're not telling the city how they need to spend their money. So what are we doing? We're planning for Cascadia, as I mentioned, and other disasters. And who's this about? It's for any number of displaced people. The latest tallies from Dogami, from the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries would indicate that as many as 2,500 people will need shelter, hydration, and warmth in the, in, excuse me, in Manzanita. Now, a lot of those people might come from the state park, but they're, if they come into the city limits of Manzanita, they become the city's responsibility for mass care. Those numbers, the 2,500, the number of 2,500 persons comes out of Dogami planning and it was based on a mid-season number. So we're not talking about the Fourth of July and we're not talking about the middle of January. The number would rather represent some volume of folks either in the fall or the winter. And those are the numbers, numbers that may be displaced, 2,500. The expectation is that around half of them would be at Underhill and the other half would be at the treatment, excuse me, at the solid waste disposal site. Again, the duration is unknown. It could be for several weeks. It could be for a few months. As I indicated earlier, help coming from outside is going to be minimal and we have no way of knowing how quickly they would be able to respond. Now, I think we, we think of so many events that have happened in this country. A tornado, it comes and it goes. It affects a swath of land and obviously there's death and injury, but it's over. Floods, maybe a little bit longer duration, but we haven't seen anything like this. We have not seen anything like what happened in Tohoku in 2011 or what happened in Sumatra a few years prior. So be aware that, you know, there's a lot of things we don't know. And it's one of the things we always laugh about with the Emergency Volunteer Corps. How do you get people excited about something that may never happen? And in your case, the city council and the city manager, how do you get excited about spending money on something that may never happen? But a fellow volunteer mentioned to me the other day, I thought he had a really good analysis. He said, "I buy insurance for my home every year. I don't have to. And if I don't use it at the end of the year, am I sad that I bought it?" No. So I think that's the attitude that if you, if you take that road, it makes it easier to accept the fact of spending monies that may never be used. So what we looked at when we did this, when our team worked to create these spending possibilities, we thought about an emergency operations plan. Manzanita has a terrific emergency operations plan. It was the credited to a number of people, but I know that our own counselor, Steve Nuttall, did a lot of the writing of that. And I think everybody owes a tip of the hat to Steve for his efforts. Coordinating with outside agencies is real critical. As I mentioned earlier, at the moment, I don't think Tillamook County is going to be able to offer a lot of support to us. There are some efforts underway to increase the opportunities there and I have every reason to believe that we'll be successful to a better degree than what we have been. Partnering with non-governmental organizations such as the aforementioned Emergency Volunteer Corps. And then finally supplies and equipment. So those four elements really constitute a, the crux of emergency planning. So this was the planning team. This is the folks that we worked with over the last several months. Dan Weitzel, Director of Public Works, Linda Kozlowski, I know that none of you know who she is. And then the remaining folks there are all members of the Public Works Augmentation Team. And I wish Dan was here because I owe him a great kudos for the creation of this team. The original intent was that due to the possible inaccessible, accessibility of many of his staff from outside areas, that the Public Works Augmentation Team would be versed in many of the activities that they do, i.e. be familiar with the equipment, how to isolate parts of the water system, et cetera. So we've been getting training from Dan and his staff and also working on some projects to the benefit of the community with Dan's terrific leadership. So individually, Dave DeShriver, Andy Graham, John Handler, myself and Stephen West are members of that group and I can't thank them enough for all that they've done to help the community. So these 18 categories, I'll call them categories, these 18 categories are pretty commonplace throughout emergency planning organization, excuse me, throughout emergency planning systems throughout the country. These are typically the things that people think about. What we ran into was that because of budget considerations, we were forced to reduce this, i.e. we would ended up with one shelter and one blanket and, you know, a few gallons of water, et cetera, going down the list. So we thought about budget and the prioritization of supplies and equipment to supply the basic needs for refugees and people who are displaced by any natural event. Category selection, I mentioned to you those 18 categories a moment ago. And then finally, product selection within each category. So that was kind of the, that, that was a way that we worked to create the specific list that you're going to see in a moment. So the elements that we worked under, we, it was both budget and needs-based. The original categories of 18 was reduced to six. And I think that you would all agree that these are paramount for survival. You might be able to get by without power. You might be able to get by without light, but you certainly can't do without shelter, water, food, warmth, sanitation or hygiene. So we'll go through these individually. I just, I'll, I'll tell you, this was such a great opportunity to work with a great bunch of people who did a yeoman's amount of work over the last few months. So talking about shelter specifically, many homes will be, will likely survive and be habitable. Historical data and seismic testing would show the resiliency of wood frame construction. And that's what almost all of our, all the homes in, in Manzanita are. People in the evacuation zone will be displaced, there's no doubt about that. And many tourists and renters will be refugees and need shelters. So over half of Manzanita's housing stock right now is inside the tsunami evacuation zone for an XL earthquake. That's not even the 9.2, that's a 9.9.0. This results in the potential of 2,500 displaced people in Manzanita. We thought about the our large tents for medical communication, food prep, reunification, command coordination. Family-sized tents, the ones like you've used with your family out camping in the past, three to six-person. Small camping tents for one or two persons. Privacy shelters for latrines and washing. And finally canopies and tarts. And just having something over your head can be a huge value. It doesn't necessarily have to be enclosed to be effective. So here's an idea of some of the products that I'm talking about. And I want you to take a look at the tent in the lower, actually on the right side of the screen there. That's a large tent that EVC has purchased one that, it's even a little bit bigger than that, but it's of that type and style. And over the last three weeks, we've had three different groups of people erect that tent. My hope is that over time that the city can buy several of these, but I'm so happy the results of this drill that we've done, again, on three occasions. Then everyone in the groups, people in these neighborhood groups had no experience with setting up a tent like this. And I'm proud to say that with very little direction, every group was able to set this up in less than an hour. Not much less, but you know, I think that's a, that's remarkable, the teamwork, the team building that took place. I, there were a number of neighbors who said, people in these groups who said, "Oh, I've seen your name on email before, but I didn't know who you were." And what a, what a, what a great team building thing for a community. So these drills are, are, they, they provide an opportunity that we otherwise might not have. The tents on the left side are more the camping-style tents, small to large. But you get an idea that a mix of both might be beneficial. That was what our group looked at. If we did all big tents, they take up a lot more room for one thing. And the smaller tents are pretty intuitive. Most of them can be set up without any instruction at all, or one of them that we have currently, the instructions are clearly printed on the inside of the bag. That's always a good thing. If you're like me though, that'd be the best place you'd look. So here's some canopies. The one on the left has some sides on it, the one on the right is not, but either of these can serve several purposes for a temporary encampment, uh, such as checking people in, um, a reunification center, uh, an opportunity to just share information amongst folks that are there. And tarps, we, we originally did not have tarps on our list. But we realized quickly the value of tarps for several, or multipurpose. And an example on the left is a quick shelter. An example on the right is an opportunity to capture and distribute water to a uh, specific location. So in either case, tarps, uh, I think they're one of the most valuable components of, of sheltering.
Lee, just a quick heads up, uh, we're going to run out of time pretty quickly. So if you could speed up just a little bit, that would be really helpful.
Ah, I didn't know there was time. I'm sorry. Okay. I'll do my best, Lynda.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So uh, council was permitted this before the meeting today. And these are costs for various products that again, we're recommending that the city consider. So total for projected sheltering costs is fifty-four hundred dollars, again, working on that thirty thousand dollar budget. Hypothermia can be controlled with proper equipment. You can get hypo, you can be, become hypothermic with outdoor temperatures of fifty degrees when it's dry. When it's wet, you can actually become hypothermic at sixty degrees. And if you've ever experienced it, it's not fun. I have, and it's a unpleasant opportunity of life. So we considered these various uh, aspects of product that we might be able to utilize in the supply spending. You've all seen these before, I'm sure. We have sleeping bags, cots. Guy up there in the upper right is surviving and not becoming hypothermic with a simple biowar blanket. And our projected cost for warmth, total forty-five hundred dollars. And you'll notice particularly the rain ponchos and sleeping bags have zeros next to them. We decided that the sleeping bags for this exercise were too, excuse me, too expensive. Uh, we didn't, I, I, I would not say that you shouldn't have them at some point, but for this first budgetary uh, considerations, we thought it best to leave them out. Likewise, rain ponchos, uh, a great rain poncho is a fifty-gallon uh, lawn and leaf bag with holes cut in it to keep you dry and warm. This is the one I'm most proud of because due to the great planning on the part of Public Works, we don't really have to worry that much about water for the first month or so. And that's, that's remarkable to be able to say that. Most communities can't say that. So we have bottled water for immediate needs. We have a filtration system for longer term. And we have fifty-five gallon safe barrels. Those are things that we included in our supply list. But here's the, here's the big caveat here, folks. Current potable water available for a thousand persons for up to eighty days. And what I mean by that is there's eighty-one thousands, eighty-one thousand gallons of water currently in storage, potable underneath the treatment plant. And there are several of us that have access to that to get it out to the public. Uh, the Public Works Augmentation Team and, and uh, Public Works are also prepared to fabricate a trailable mini-water print, mini-water treatment plant with significant supplies of potable water. And you'll be hearing more about this in the coming months. This is one of the projects that P W O T has been working on with, with Dan and his staff. And when it comes to fruition, I can't wait to share it with everybody. I told the team that we're going to ride it, ride it downtown like a parade. So here's bottled water. The red and blue devices are known as Agua Mundas. We highly recommend the purchase and use of those. They uh, remove ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of bacteria and protozoan pathogens. They are designed for emergency relief situations. They have a capacity of fourteen gallons of raw water. And they produce four and a half gallons per minute simply by cranking the handle. And the best part about these guys is that they last for ten years. So once you start using it, the filter's good, filtration system's good for ten years. Barrels and pumps, pretty self-explanatory. Our projected costs for water, due to the great work done by Public Works, you don't need to spend that much. Some barrels, some pumps, uh, and an Agua Munda to the total of thirteen twenty. Sanitation, sanitation, any, any cons, pro, excuse me, any system used for sanitation, we've got to make sure that it meets certain criteria. And probably this list is, is very important. Earthquake-resistant, rapid deployment, user-friendly. We don't have very many children here, but we have a lot of elderly and disabled who have, have to have, be comfortable when they're using the facilities. We have to recognize the long-term environmental, environmental impacts. It has to be affordable and expandable. And the location of setup may prevent certain types. So this is a huge dilemma, the most difficult aspect of mass care planning. Governments and emergency planners struggle with this globally. This isn't, this isn't unique to Manzanita. And it's probably not a solution about what we do, or rather a combination of solutions. The Halem put in a septic system. And they're really proud of that, and they should be. And Bruce Halverson from the Halem Bay Waste Association did a great job of sizing this thing and making it uh, usable. But it's good for two hundred people for one month. First off, we're thinking about three to four months. Secondly, we're talking about twenty-five hundred people. So that system may not be viable for our use. But be aware that Bruce and Chris Chiola, the Environmental Program Manager from Tillamook County, Dan and I are all talking about um, what systems might be the most viable for our area here. And that's going to require a lot of further study. So no, no firm commitment on that, but uh, you'll notice here under sanitation costs, portable toilets. Dan suggested that the city perhaps buy some portable toilets to use for emergency preparedness. And at first I thought that was kind of odd. It was like, well, what are you going to do with them the rest of the time? Well, I understand that this, is the city furnishing the uh, portable toilets for the farmer's market, or the farmer's market furnishing that? I don't know. Do you know, Lynda?
I think the city is furnishing.
Okay, so if the city already has portable toilets, then they've just saved some money by having these on hand. Storage may be an issue. Dan says that he's going to try his best to work that out. And you see the other elements down there, the total of six thousand dollars. So curiously enough, all of a sudden sanitation involves a six thousand dollar price tag for a hundred people. And that may not be enough after we do further study and determine what the best solutions for Manzanita might be. Hygiene becomes extremely difficult in disaster. The is a, poor hygiene is a leading risk factor for infectious diseases such as cholera, dysentery, hepatitis, and typhoid. In two thousand and seventeen alone, three-quarters of a million people died worldwide because of poor sanitation and hygiene. And you can only imagine the effects of not having proper handwashing stations or products after a disaster. You've got a lot of uh, pathogens in the, on the ground. And they can be transferred easily from one one inhabitant to another. The threat of communicable disease easily more than tripled in a post-disaster environment. So we thought, talked about two different possibilities for this. One, a wash, uh, wash stands for water sanitation or hygiene. That's a national program that uh, was utilized here. We actually teach classes on that at the Emergency Volunteer Corps for personal use, not for mass care encampments. And then the other being manufactured foot-operated basins. So the hand wash, uh, you see on the right is more consistent with a wash-style system. And the one on the left is a commercial hand wash station. And those are available, and the group considered that six of those might be the way to go. And they're a hundred bucks apiece. And our soap and sanitizer takes us up to a total of eleven twenty for projected hygiene costs. So food, do we need food right away? No, we got to have it within a couple of days. So they need to offer nutritional value, more importantly shelf life. All of these things that are on our lists, we considered shelf life and durability and the uh, ability for the product to perform even after years of storage. So the Coast Guard-type nutritional bars, some of you've tried them, and you agree with me that they're really yucky. But they do provide a fair amount of nutritional benefit. Dehydrated foods, freeze-dried foods, and M R Es, the military-style meals ready to eat. And there they are, wonderful emergency bars on the right, or excuse me, on the left, the M R Es at the bottom right. And emergency food supply in a dehydrated form up above. So I do want to take this time to just note that Dan found a smoking good deal at the state uh, website, state surplus, excuse me. And we, we talked and we decided that it might be a good idea for the city to buy five hundred M R Es. Normally, M R Es are about eight dollars apiece. And he got them for less than a dollar apiece at the state uh, surplus. So again, hats off to Dan. So here's the costs. You see the total at the bottom of eleven oh five, or eleven seven oh five for food for a hundred people. And I do want to note over on the left, about two-thirds of the way down, it says, that's two meals a day for twelve days for a hundred people. Is eleven thousand dollars. Two meals a day for twelve days. Not a lot. The last item down there, wind-fired cook stove, that's uh, going to be a next proof of concept that we're going to do, that EVC is going to do. Hopefully to the benefit of the city, we're going to find the one that works the best for the least amount of money and performs well. Some of you may or may not know that there are two containers that look like this, or twenty-foot containers. They're up behind the water treatment plant. These were purchased by the Emergency Volunteer Corps set in place by Public Works. And the Emergency Volunteer Corps donated time to paint them and to get the interior prepared for electrification. Both are electrified and contain a dehumidifier. We, EVC N B, has products stored in one container. We have some tents in there. We have some blankets, a stove, and one of those Agua Munda water filters. In the other container, the city has stored five hundred M R Es, the ones that I just mentioned that Dan purchased with the supply funds. So we've got some things already there. This is what it looks like inside, and that is two hundred blankets and forty cots and some miscellaneous sundry supplies. You can see that the container is it's not full by any means. We could probably be more efficient with our packing, but the idea is that storage becomes extremely valuable and limit, limited. The containers have a capacity limitation. Our supplies and equipment are bulky. So we do have to consider um, additional space. And the location is the key, I E. Close to the temporary encampments would be ideal. Underhill, the new city hall, or the Quonset Hut, and the transfer station, perhaps with a container. So I just want to take a moment and mention to the city specifically to Leila and the counselors and the mayor, the importance of considering a mass care encampment at Underhill when it comes to planning for your new city hall. For example, some of the infrastructure for a uh, sanitation system might be incorporated into the infrastructure for the building itself. And the siting and planning for the location of the building might uh, benefit from some thought about a mass care encampment. So we have a memorandum of understanding between the city and EVC N B. And that collaboration was drafted in April of two thousand and nineteen. And here's some things that we take to heart. You may ask us, according to that agreement, to assist with preparedness projects. That's what today is about. To provide proof of concept, that's what the tent is about. To work jointly on disaster mitigation projects. That's also what today is about. Explore joint training exercises and drills. I can't wait to get the council out there putting that tent up. It's my firm belief that you would enjoy the experience. Disaster Preparedness Planning and Warehousing Supplies. Those are all the things that are in that M O U. And how, how specifically paramount are they to today's discussion? So that's the, did I speed it up fast enough, Lynda?
That was fine. Thank you. Thanks, Lee.
Okay.
So uh, in terms of next step, I believe that it, that uh, Leila, let, excuse me, Leila and uh, Lee should meet to come up with the next step and bring that back to council in September. If, and I would certainly appreciate any questions that you might have for Lee uh, before that happens.
Well, I know I'm going to look forward to meeting Leila. We've been exchanging emails over the last and we haven't, uh, we haven't been close enough to shake a hand. So I'll look forward to that, Leila.
I feel like I already know you, Lee, but I, I also look forward to that, too.
And it may be an elbow bump. Yeah, masked elbow bump, mask elbow bump, right. So does the council have any questions or?
Got a quick question.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Um, Lee, thank you. Very sobering and thought-provoking presentation. I really appreciate it as a full-timer here and somebody who looks at the water every day and wonders when it might come. At this point, are, do, do you feel that there is important work that's waiting merely for funding? Or is it really waiting for more decision-making and things like that? It sounds like you've done a lot of of work so far with the funds available. I'm just wondering, at what point is funding holding you back from, from moving even, you know, further and quicker forward?
Thank you, Hans. I, I think that both elements are, are critical. But funding certainly holds you back from taking care of more people. You know, if you did have uh, more ample funding available, then you'd be able to take care of more folks. Again, we based most of the information that you saw today on a hundred people. And if we have twenty-five hundred, you multiply all those costs, thirty thousand dollars by twenty-five. And you know, you're, you're way up there, and we haven't even considered power and lighting and communication and all the other categories that um, were not discussed today. So my humble numbers would indicate somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars to fully for the community to fully be prepared to take care of twenty-five hundred displaced people. Now, will that ever happen? Definitely won't in your lifetime and my lifetime, but the important thing is that steps are being made to create a better safety net than what you've had in the past.
Sure. I, I guess what I meant was, is there work that your group could do if there was some more funding available, not on the hand scheme of planning for the absolute worst-case scenario, but it sounds like you have momentum now and you have uh, participation. And I'm just wondering if there's uh, if there's something that would, it would And I'm just wondering if there's, uh, if there's something that would, would you benefit from a shot in the arm in terms of other equipment that you would gather or try or?
I, I don't think so, not right at the moment. The projects that we're working on with Dan right now are funded either through the supply budget or through their water, you know, water systems. And so they're funded through, uh, you know, water dollars. Uh, so I don't see that impacting our P WAT group in any way, uh, other than positive. Yeah. Thanks for the Any other questions? Mayor Mike, you have to have a question. Come on.
Uh, yeah, I'm looking forward to going and helping pitch a tent.
All right.
Can I bring an assistant with me to help? My, my brain says I'd love to pitch a tent. My body will probably say, no, I didn't, I can't. Uh, but yeah, the trick is on those tents and I know we've talked about tents for a number of years and looked at several types. The trick is is getting us old timers up there and can we get these tents up? Cause I don't think unless you got a platoon of 18 year olds up there to help, it's gonna be, we need to have tents that are fairly simple that we can get up.
Well, this one is simple and we've had, as I mentioned, three groups of people do it and I don't think there was any group that had fewer than five or six people that were over 70. So this isn't necessarily a young man's game and that was part of the goal with testing this particular style out. Is that it's relatively intuitive, even though it's big and it's manageable by six people can put it up.
Okay. Well, that's a, cause I, I think it is important to find a tent that can, you push a button and it pops up or as close to possible. That's my humble
I like.
Tonight at the council meeting, I, hopefully we're gonna get a shorter version of this because we can allocate, that's a great presentation, but in the overall scheme of what we gotta do tonight, we can't allocate that much stuff.
No, no, I'm looking at, I'm looking at 10 or 15 minutes max.
Okay, that will be good. Anybody else got a question for Lee?
Oh, sorry. Just quickly, I wanted to make sure that both Margaret and Lee sent over their presentations to us so we can post them after the meeting.
I, I have, uh, I've sent the one that I just did, the shortened version tonight. I don't know that, I don't know that I'll be sending that over. If, after, after, uh, all said and done, let me know if you want it.
Okay, thanks, Lee.
And I have, I did not send mine over, um, Leila, but I, Linda, can I send it to you and you can send it to Leila?
Yes, that would, that would
Thank you.
Do that right now.
So, so Mike, one of the things that, that we're requesting is that a decision be made either tonight or that we talk about what the next steps are in terms of actually moving forward. This would be a city purchase. It would be managed by the city. It would be deployed by the city. EVC's role has simply been to do the study and the, the research behind it and, and I, I just have to give uh, Lee and his team huge credit. They've spent hours and hours and hours what, what would work, what wouldn't work, what would be cost effective, how we should and ultimately that is, that's not me. And so I, I would, I, I would like to get some kind of direction uh, in council this evening about what, what the council sees as next steps. And my recommendation again, would be that, that over this next month, we work with Leila to come up with a strategy and make a recommendation, a specific recommendation from the city of Manzanita in September's council meeting.
I would, Linda, I'm, I'm gonna just put my two cents in here. I think that all of you counselors and Leila, even before Leila and I communicate, I, I think you should all take a look at that list and see if there's things in there that you disagree with or maybe we should, you should have twice as many of one thing and none of the other. We did a lot of work, but that doesn't mean we're right. So take a chance, take an opportunity to look at it and see what you think.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And, and so what was the total cost of all that you put together again, Lee?
$30,000.
Okay. Would it be smart to just buy 10,000 at first and see how it goes and then buy another 10,000 or she would just bite it all off and do it?
Well, you know, that's, that's really up to you folks. I mean, I'm not the, I'm not the budget guy here. I'm the uh, you know, trying to recommend some suitable equipment for you folks to utilize.
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking that, uh, we bought part of it and then we could figure out how to store it, see how it all pans out and, and make sure we're buying the right thing and then buy some more. I, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, but I think the next step is tonight, we'll just get consensus from the council to go forward. And have, have Leila meet with Lee and come up with a basically a suggested purchase order. What we want to buy and then, uh, go from there and do that in September, which is EVC month and then Linda.
Emergency Preparedness Month, which is great.
Yeah, yeah, perfect.
I, I just want to emphasize one thing because it's, it can be really confusing. First of all, these are recommendations by EVC. They're not, certainly not requirements. It's, it took a lot of time and study, but but it's the city's decision. Secondly, it's the city's purchase, so it would be the city's material. It wouldn't belong to anybody but the city. It could only be deployed by the city. This has, EVC has nothing to do with its deployment. What EVC would do or what our teams would do is provide resources to the city under the city's management. So this is really a city project with, uh, the study and recommendation from an external consultant that happens to be the Emergency Volunteer Corps. So I think it's important to look at it that way.
With, with all the effort Lee and his group has put into this thing, I would, hopefully we'd go with their recommendation instead of start picking it apart. And you know, figuring out, well, maybe we should do this or do that. I, I don't know that the council's gonna want to get into all that.
I, I agree with that. I think to your suggestion, Mike, I, I would recommend going with, with Lee's recommendation, but we what Lee did is he took everything and did it on 100 people. If, if you felt uncomfortable with that, we could take it to 50 people. So that, that would be an option.
I mean, that's a costless decision, uh, my decision. I was just thinking that maybe instead of just buying the whole 30,000 write off, why don't we buy 10 or 15 and see how it comes in, see how we store it, see what we think of it and then go to the next level. It's just a thought.
Well, I think that's worth discussing this evening.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions here on this? We're starting to run out of time and I want to go over just a couple of the quick things here.
One quick question, Mike, if I may. Uh, you, I'm assuming you do not want COVID details at the council meeting this evening.
Well, I'd like, if you can, very abbreviated. Cause, uh, you know, we, this is a very in-depth discussion. We've had this afternoon and we basically used it two hours and we have other city business we gotta conduct. So I don't want to get get us into a situation where we're over our time limit or something. Are set up to go from seven to nine 30. We go beyond nine 30, we have to have a unanimous, uh, motion from the council to go for another half hour. And, uh, so, and what do you think, Linda? Can we do this on a condensed ba- basis or how do you want to do this?
I would ask Margaret to maybe highlight some things that would, would support the city's encouragement to wear masks inside. That, that would be great.
Yeah, I just, uh, saw the news that the governor has announced that all healthcare workers in Oregon will have to be vaccinated by the end of September or submit to weekly testing. And the tests or the cases today are 1,213, five deaths and 15 more cases in Tillamook. So this is, uh, this is an issue hitting us right between the eyes here.
It's here. It's definitely here.
Oh, does anybody know what the sewage treatment, are they still doing that?
No.
They're not? Okay.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I'm glad you're with.
I've been able to, I've been able to watch and listen and that's been terrific. Uh, the one thing that, and I've already talked to Linda and Lee about this that uh, but one thing I think we should not forget is the policies and procedures and logistics about if we purchase items, how are we going to handle them? Where are we going to store them? Where, how are we going to ensure that uh, that those materials and supplies are, you know, not faced with water intrusion and theft opportunities and there's just a lot of background work, um, that needs to happen. And I'm not sure we're gonna be able to get that done by September. That's really Leila's bailiwick, but I just know from my own experiences that these things need, um, a lot of foundation building before you go out and buy a bunch of stuff. And then the other thing, listening today that uh, had me, is a little confusing to me. Is the 30,000, Lee, simply, and I think I saw Anna asked the same question. Is the 30,000 for 100 people? So we're basically spending, if my math is correct, $300 a person. Is that um, what I'm understanding you to say?
Thank you, Steve. It was $300 for some supplies for 100 people. And an example of that, that that doesn't work is the, uh, example I shared about the food. That was, uh, two meals a day for 12 days for the, I don't remember the amount now, but $11,000. So the, the, the overall number is huge to take care of a significant number of displaced people. But that was the premise that we worked off of was, let's see, how, how much is it gonna cost to take care of 100 people? And to get it down to the budget numbers, we lessened some of the numbers for various, uh, various products.
Did you, can I ask Lee too, did you do any research? And I'm sorry, Mayor, we're carrying this forward, but did you do, and we can talk about it tonight too, but did you do any research relative to other jurisdictions in terms of supplies that they were storing their caches, what they were made up of and what the cost was per individual being served?
Not cost per individual, no, but in terms of what other people are doing. Uh, there's a terrific document, without getting in the weeds, here's a terrific document by one of our by Tillamook, or excuse me, by Lincoln County, um, Sue Graves.
Right.
Founded by Ogami, yeah. And it lists cash ideas for, uh, various product, various sizes of communities, et cetera. But there was no cost associated with that. And I think, you know, it's fair to say, Steve, too, that what we tried to do was pick products that were middle of the road, i.e. good bang for the buck. So they were durable. But they were also cost effective. They weren't top of the line. And you'll notice that there aren't any specific products mentioned there. There are costs for X number of something. And that's gonna be, that's gonna require some work on the part of the city. I know Dan is willing to take that on to some degree and I'm willing to help him with that. But those, you might not be able to go out and find, for example, camping tents for 200 bucks a piece. Maybe I've spent two and a quarter. Or maybe you can find them for 180. There's a lot of work yet to do and we didn't want to be specific with, you know, you gotta buy this Stan'sport eight person tent. We didn't want to go there.
Well, that, thanks. I just, it just, um, just makes me think even more that we've got some work to do, uh, yet. And, but it'd be great and I, I appreciate everything. First of all, I'm 100% supportive of developing what your folks are going towards. But I think we have some additional work to do that may not be accomplished by September. So that's just my feeling about it.
I, I don't disagree with that, Steve, but I, I really want to keep the ball rolling so that
Oh yeah, of course.
You're moving forward. And a lot of the storage issues, uh, we've, we've talked about in separate, didn't present today. So I think there's a lot of work that's been done on it and, and I, again, I think meeting with Leila and making sure that the city is covered and, uh, that you feel comfortable with the next step is really important. I to, I totally agree.
So running out of time. We got about 10 minutes left. Gerald, I see you have your hand up. Do you want to, uh, jump in here? Can you unmute? Gerald, please?
Yep, I'm here. You hear me?
Yes.
Someone mentioned about the wastewater testing. And at the last Reinhardt Board Meeting, Carrie Scott, who's the administrator of the wastewater, is our secretary and we asked her and she said their grant has run out on the testing. But that the wastewater agency has decided to go ahead and do a test. And it's gonna be, it will include the variant. So it's forthcoming.
Oh, okay.
Fantastic news. Thank you, Gerald.
That's good to know. I know that testing down and doing that is not free. Costs them some money, so. Okay, we're down the last 10 minutes. I, as I mentioned earlier, um, you know, we're reporting 1,213 cases today and 15 in Tillamook. On our agenda tonight, we've got a two event permits. Have some discussion on that. We're gonna do Mutsonita again in September. It's just hard with these events because you really don't know where we're gonna be in two or three weeks. And, uh, you know, we went through this with the parade and we eventually decided not to do the parade this year, which in hindsight was probably a smart thing to do. But, um, I know, and then we got a cert, uh, event permit up here too. I know our group, the Ridge Rats, where I live, we're gonna do an event at the end of August and just, I think it was yesterday, the day before they decided to postpone it for a while. Cause it was part social and part gathering and so forth. And we just didn't feel comfortable. I wasn't part of that discussion, but I noticed that they decided to postpone that. So, um, be prepared for some of that discussion I have tonight. And the other thing we got on the agenda is, um, possibility of changing the time of our council meetings. Our council meetings are at seven o'clock. We're about, I think about the only city on the coast that still does it at seven o'clock. I think everybody else is like six. We changed the planning commission meeting from seven to four several years ago. And as I remember, the original idea of having a meeting at seven o'clock was to allow second homeowners time to drive to the coast after work if they want to participate in the city council meeting. And now we're providing all this electronic virtual access and that's not necessary. So, uh, we're gonna take a look at maybe moving to six o'clock. I, all our neighboring cities are pretty much on that schedule. So anyway, um, so that's what we got going on tonight. Does anybody have anything else or we'll adjourn for a dinner break and come back at seven. Did I miss anything, Leila, that we should talk about?
No, I think you had it covered, Mayor.
Okay, um, everybody's okay with that, then, uh, we're adjourned here at, uh, 4:50 and, uh, we'll see at seven o'clock. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Julianne, if you're still on, I don't have time to reply to you by text, but the answer is yes, if you could give me a call.